We could call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia? Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. Mr. Demakia sends his regards. He had an...
Scheduling conflict.
Scheduling conflict.
Yes.
So he asks us to carry on. The pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we would entertain our first hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, please feel free to do so at this time. There will be another one of these at the end of the meeting.
Let's scoot that over. Maybe they can't hear. Sorry about that.
I need a motion to approve or amend the sign minutes from the December 3 regular meeting.
So moved. A support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. This time is there any old business for discussion?
One of the old business that I'd like to bring up is, of course, the discussion.
Okay.
And that was when I saw that there wasn't to be a discussion on the levy. And my problem is that I think there should be a discussion for that. I had no idea that it wasn't going to be placed on the agenda, that because there are certain logical sequential orders that this must go through, that it has to be placed on the agenda so that it can be discussed, so it can get to the auditor. Because here's the problem. The levy belongs to us. And long after our CEO goes, that still belongs to us. And when we pass this levy, we could do a number of wonderful positive things with this levy, with this money. And it doesn't matter. I am not concerned at this time with previous money that is going on. I'm concerned about the future. So if we don't pass the levy, then we get into a quandary where we have to start doing things like maybe shorting ourselves when it comes to substitute, maybe getting to the point that we have to do things like mess with the special education and some of the aids we have to cut. That seems to be where we start. We have to maybe mess with the special education, not only that, but with our, what, basketball, the aids that we need for that. See, it comes to where we need things. He is long since gone, and he might get something wonderful like the CEO by the time he might be called another name, and he is over to a wonderful position like Arlandon. And he'll get that, and he'll move on to another higher position. But this is us. This is Lorraine. This is where we belong. And we have done something that is negative to us simply because we are trying to thwart him in his activity. So I'm not looking back, and I'm not concerned, and maybe I should be, with the money that he has sort of saved, and at the end, he might not have that money. But this money is ours. It won't cost anyone one penny. This money is due us. All we have to do is put it on the agenda and pass it. I don't understand why we're having difficulty with that. This is our money. Somebody explain it to me why we don't want to do this.
First of all, I think there has to be a justification for any levy. I was on the levy committee since 2003 until 2012 when we passed it. Okay? But first, there has to be a justification. Do you agree with everything the way our money's being spent right now? Do you... I mean, because I can sit here and say this. There's about 16 new positions in this district that we never had any say-so. We never got to say yes. We never got to say no. We don't have any say at all. Okay? And I have a problem with that. Okay? I have a, you know, I have a problem with not even being able to give an opinion on, you know, whether this is good or bad or anything. You know, I'm really ticked at the state. And if I had a chance to send a message to say, "If you want to take away governance of Lorraine City Schools, be prepared to pay for it," like in the Deroff issue and the way they ruled on the Deroff case on state funding, we, you know, they still never even -- the state has never even got to that. I am so disappointed in our legislators who can't figure out that you can't legislate poverty's effect on education. Okay? And for me to put a levy on, I would have to know first that I actually need the money. When you have a 20.9 million carryover and then an article comes out in a paper and it says, "Well, we're not going to end up in the -- we're going to end up in the red at the end of the year, this year," I wonder what's happening. And we don't have -- we're not privileged to information that we should honestly have, and we have it. And, you know, I am disappointed from the governor, the legislators, the ADC, I mean, right on down the line. It's just, we were ready to be so cooperative. Okay? We were a poster boy for cooperation.
You're right.
And we got nothing. I couldn't honestly sit here and tell you that our money's being well-spent. And I don't think you can sit here and tell me that the money's being well-spent either because nobody knows.
Bill, I absolutely agree with you, but I'm still looking down the future.
But when I ask for money is because it's going out there and saying, "We need this. We really need this." Because we did need it before. We were cutting all the aids, and we were cutting all -- I mean, they're the first ones to get cut.
Yes.
And we've been through this once or twice, and we know that. But I honestly can't tell you. I couldn't sit here and tell you, you know, what's our budget, 130, 160 million? Okay? When you take 3 million, you think, "Maybe you could just handle that." You know, maybe there's a way to just handle it, to roll it in, you know? I can't honestly sit here and say that the CEO has never been here to tell us that there's a need for it. He's not telling us what he did with it. He doesn't come here at all. He doesn't say anything to us.
But when we saw that projected agenda that was already given to us by our treasurer, we knew that we needed that money, looking at that. And that's what I'm saying. I am not worried about the money and if we're going to run out. I'm worried about the future. If he left yesterday, what will we do then? We still will need this money, and it's not going to cost us anything.
Oh, it does. It does cost you. Running levies is not free. Putting them on are not free. The district pays. Depending on how many are on, it could be from 25,000 to 50,000, and that's there. And then the money that's spent for the committee who, you know, you don't just put it on and it's voted on. Of course, I guess you could do that. Okay? But it's not very advisable. You have to have people work for things they believe in. Okay? And I'm going to tell you right now, I've had too many people come and tell me, "The way things are going and with the issues that we're having right now," that they are not -- the people I know aren't for it.
But see, that's what I'm saying. We shouldn't look at it as a negative. We should be looking at it's for the students. That's all we need to look at.
If I could, but there are a number of perspectives. One is, first, I think it's a healthy discussion to have. I think it's a discussion, and we've had it before, and we've had it, and private conversations will continue to have it.
Yes.
It's our conversation to have. I think the challenge that we had as far as the agenda piece is when someone outside of us places it on our agenda and they're not even here to discuss it. So you bringing this up, if we're bringing it up, this is a very reasonable conversation that we have to have. Now, in terms of, what Bill expressed was the need. Now, I believe there's always a need for more money. So I'm not just questioning the need. I think, yeah, sure, the district needs it. I mean, I don't know a district that doesn't need money. It's our responsibility partially is not to just assess the need, but to assess the confidence in how we're spending money. So when I go to the voters, what we're saying is, "We can vouch for how this money is being spent." We have confidence in the administrative process that this money is being spent in the best interest of our students, of our district. I can't say that because I don't have the information to say it. It's not just about needing money because everyone needs more money. Every district, inflation goes up, costs go up. I don't question whether we need it or not. Let me finish. We actually, when we passed this new money initiative that we have, I think we asked for 3 million? 3 mil?
Yeah.
And we needed about 6 mil. Now, the treasurer recommended to us that we go for 6 mil. We had tried getting these large amounts, could never do it. So what we said as a board is, "Let's try and get what we think the community will give us, not what we need." So we know we need this much, but if the community's only willing to give us this much, when we keep asking for this much, we never get there. So it won't be the first time that we look at need and put it in a certain perspective. Now, we've dealt with deficits before, and we'll deal with deficits again. When we got on the board, there was, what, was it 4 million? Then it ballooned to 7 or 12 million. So we've been making cuts and dealing with deficits for a long time.
We handled 21.4 million in two years.
So the need is there.
Well, Tim, where is this lack of confidence that we're, when it comes to financial matters that we're dealing with?
I've expressed very clearly the lack of confidence, the lack of information provided. I can't -- I couldn't tell you what we're deciding on because it was never presented to us. We're not -- we don't have any information. Now, this may be your first time on this board.
It is.
Right. So we're used to having a certain body of information by which we make decisions. You have not benefited from ever receiving this kind of quality or quantity of information. But we're used to a certain amount of information. We're used to a certain amount of understanding, being able to ask questions about budgetary things as well as operational things. We don't have that privilege. And so as a body, we're expected to be able to verify spending, to be able to, with confidence, say that we believe that the administrators in this district are spending money in an efficient way, in a way that best benefits students, in a way that we can verify, and we can't do that. Why? Because we don't have the information. House Bill 70, it's not about authority either. It's not about who gets to make the decisions. For me, it's a lot about understanding knowledge and information. And if I don't have that, then I can't say to folks, "Hey, we can vouch for this. We feel confident that we are doing this the right way." And there's nothing that I could base that on. The other piece is, it is our levy. We'd be very protective of our levy. We have three opportunities to pass this levy. And right now, the conditions in our district and in confidence of people make our levy very, 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 very questionable. And normally, renewals aren't this questionable.
Okay.
So, but in this, but it is that questionable. So it's not our job to put a levy on the ballot. It's our job to try and gain the resources, which means if the levy goes out, the levy has to pass. Our best opportunity to pass it. And under these conditions, not only can I not say that we are spending the money wisely, I can't say that we are in favorable conditions to pass a money initiative.
Well, what would bring in a favorable condition so that we can do this?
I think a lot of it has to do with trust with the district. I think a lot of it has to do with us trusting what's happening. I think a lot of it, and more and more, has to do with the community trusting. And so from a lot of folks, they're in that wait-and-see mode. Let's see what happens. A lot of folks have gone from a neutral place of wait-and-see to, "You know what? I don't have any confidence in this process either." So again, I think, and all of us have very seriously considered the ramifications if we don't get money. Now, we're still holding out, and we expect that there's going to be some changes that occur, and we will be in a favorable position to place a levy on the ballot. If, from our last episode with this, some months ago, would you say -- and I think we were in the same place in terms of the lack of confidence at that time.
Yes.
And I think from what I remember, all of us, we may have felt different ways about how do we get that money, but I think all of us felt like we didn't have the information we needed or a certain sense of confidence in how the money was spent that we could verify. If that's still true, I would ask this. What has changed since then? What has changed in the behavior and the relationship with this administration, in this board, in its community that's different than what was going on 6 months ago, 3 months ago, 9 months ago? And I don't think there's anything, unless you have something that's different, I don't know what's changed.
So are you saying that if our CEO comes to the board meeting and explains his point of view and lays out his financial structure, that we could proceed maybe with 2 or 3 meetings?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, if there's no difference in the quality of our communication, in the confidence level in which we have in this process, now, would a meeting do that? Maybe would 5 meetings do it? Maybe, I don't know.
Would several meetings?
I don't know what would do it. I'm just saying, I don't know what's going to cause the actual thing to occur. I'm just saying there has to be a change, and I don't know what that is. Right now, we can't get anybody to come to 1 meeting. And so I know this. We have a communication deficit. We lack information that, for me personally, that I need to make these assessments, and there's a huge lack of trust. That is, that's a reality that we're in. And what we said about 6 months ago or 3 months ago, whenever it was, what we needed to restore that confidence and to build that confidence. And we said this. We hope it doesn't come down to someone wanting to come to see us a week before it's supposed to happen, just like it happened, just like what happened the last time. No conversation, and then all of a sudden, here we are on the eve of the diligence portion of this, which by a certain date. And then we get some, what I would consider not even strong requests, no presence.
Mm-hmm.
And here we are, it's going to be the same thing. Have you been communicated with at any level regarding this?
No.
No.
Could we have roundtable meetings before this occurs and sit and talk with our CEO?
Listen, we have a roundtable twice a month. Our square table.
No, no. With our roundtable, and that is the focus? Would that improve? And then we could be the spokespeople?
I think any communication would improve.
That would go out and spread the news to our community?
I think any process that we engage in could be an improvement because right now, it's zero. In fact, it's not even zero, it's negative. We have, it's not that we don't have zero trust. I think there is a deficit of trust. Now, I don't know what the solution is, and I don't know that anybody does, but right now, no one's trying to address it at all.
And how did we get to this negative position?
Over time, asking questions, not getting answers, asking questions, getting mixed answers, asking 1 question, getting 4 different answers, not communicating. There's a barrage of things.
Do you think it would help us if sometimes that we would go to their meeting?
I've been to their meeting. He's never been ours.
I mean, all of us as one will go to their meetings.
We can't do business as a board just at a, "Let's gather down at his office," because we have to do that inside of our board meetings. And we've requested him to, everyone, since he's been here, that he won't come to.
But I can see that we're doing very much business if he's not here.
Well, the sunshine law defines how we meet as a board. We don't define that ourselves.
Okay.
You've invited him, I believe.
Could we have a board meeting with him included? Sure. He has a standing invitation.
You've invited him personally, I believe.
Yes, I have.
Has that invitation ever been accepted?
To our board meeting.
I'm just, I mean, why?
You're asking these pretty simple questions, so.
From your own experience, I'm not saying this is, you know, is it Tim or Mark or Bill or Tony or -- no matter where we measure this at, you have, you came in with more confidence than us in some regards because we had been building our, whatever it was, over a period of time. Since you've been involved in this process, how much communication have you had as a board member from our administration?
I have numerous because I go to the meetings.
You go to a meeting. I said, "How much communication have you had? How much correspondence have you -- how much communication, direct communication, have you had from this administration to you as a board member?"
I have had serious communications with the CEO and with their administrator.
Okay.
Because I take the effort to do that and to listen to the, whenever he has his meetings at the time. But you know what happened? I had that injury, and so I had to pull back.
Okay.
And that's what did that.
Our board has been very clear in terms of what is a reasonable expectation.
Yeah. I would go to the business meetings, and I said, "If he didn't come to us," you know, I can't, maybe because I was new, and I went to the business meetings. And I found out a lot of information, and I found out how much he worked trying to establish communications with the business communications, with the parents, with the teachers. And I couldn't understand sometimes the gulf between the 2.
Did you go to the Longfellow meeting? I know you did because I seen you there.
Yes.
Did you hear what he said about the Board of Education and the levy?
Yes.
Okay. Did you agree with that?
No.
No? I didn't either, and I figure if that's his approach, okay? And it's a no approach.
And I asked directly if we were headed toward charter schools. He gave me 1 succinct answer, and that was a no. And I was satisfied with that.
Do you know what?
And maybe it's my innocence because I'm new on the board, but that was it.
I think, I mean, we love your enthusiasm. Don't ever think we don't love that. But, you know, a turnaround model, okay? A turnaround model, and for the turnaround principles, is based on certain things. It's based on coming in, getting rid of all your administration.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the second part of that is getting rid of about 50% of your teachers. That's, I mean, that's on paper, that's a turnaround model. But it's based on charter schools now, and the only place they have deans are in charter schools.
Now, what I really have some serious problems with is the level of morality in the schools, the low emotional trauma. It seems as going through all the schools with the teachers, that they are very sad, they are nervous.
To morality, to morality, to morale.
I've never seen teachers that are afraid of their administration the way this seems to be going through.
So with that thought, because it's another conversation we've had, the relationship between administration and the teachers, employees, is very challenging, to the point where, and I've heard this from many teachers, and I've seen and I've witnessed it to an extent, that kind of workplace behavior is not only unreasonable, it shouldn't be tolerated. I mean, the conditions that people are working under, the anxiety, the stress, the fear.
Yes.
So, and again, when we're talking about asking for money, I think those are always important issues. What kind of work conditions are our teachers working in? And to, and are we going to fund that? Yeah, I think there are a number of places, not just in terms of whether the district financially needs money or not, but on a variety of other fronts where I think it's very challenging. Communication, the issues that we're having with teacher morale, the issues that we've had with this grading component, and a variety of others. It's not just 1 thing. I think the overall conditions in our district are very unhealthy. Now...
Now, this is what I wanted to say. When we had the difficulty with the violence and the fighting that we were supposed to go to, immediately, he said, "Let's do something about it." And something was done. So the quickness in which he put out that fire was to be admired.
So just so you know, that those, the urgency in which that was addressed?
Yes.
Was externally motivated. Yes, I'm not telling you what I heard about, I'm telling you what I know about. The engagement of the police chief, the county prosecutor's office, and a variety of other entities, that meeting that we had was not caught by this district. That meeting was convened by the police chief. That, so all of the...
That was a conglomeration of all of that that was helped.
Folks were invited, and they participated. But don't be mistaken on how the leadership of that came about.
But still, with Lorraine City Schools.
I'm just making a clear statement objectively on the actions and the reactions, so...
But that happened. Okay? Now, he said that he was going to go back and reteach the areas with the numbers and the grading system, with the AB and the numbers, the 1, 2, 3. So that is going to get cleared up eventually. So that will be an area that the teachers no longer will be emotionally traumatized because it's hard to teach something that you don't know and don't understand. So now, that's going to be moved out of the way. So then, as I see it, as things come up, things are taken care of. So he is doing the best he can as he finds out where the problems are. And I keep saying, when you're a change agent, there are going to be some areas that you're going to have to work particularly hard in, and that's what he is doing. So I can't understand why the teachers are so upset.
You said you can.
If he's doing...
You can.
I can't understand why they are so upset if he's trying to do the best he can. There seem to be some kind of communication problem here that we're not talking. They need to be talking. I don't understand the fear. This is what I'm saying. If I could understand the fear, then I would be okay. I have been in that position. See, I have worked for the Lorraine Board of Education, and I have been in the position where I did not want to get out of bed because of that. I have been, and some of them that are sitting here know what has happened to me, to the point that I had a principal that wanted to put drugs in my office drawer to get me in difficulty. And some of them that are here today know about that. I have been through that here, and I'm supposed to be the fair-haired child. I was the one that was their cheerleader and went through K through 12 and came back to Lorraine High and wanted to be with the system. And I was the one that had the local school superintendent, but they gave me the ceiling of, "What? I could only get to, what, assistant principal." And so I know that. And I'm the one that did not want to get out of bed, and I'm the one that was traumatized. So don't tell me about that. I know, but you had to communicate, and I had to go to my superintendent and speak with him. So I don't understand why the teachers can't get with the president of the LEA and speak with him and find out what it is about the CEO that they're having trouble with and with the deans that they're having difficulty with.
Maybe you can inquire with them. I don't know.
Yes.
If that's, maybe you can pursue that.
They meet often.
Yeah.
The LEA president meets with the CEO quite often. And then also, all of the chiefs, other than Mr. Hardy himself, we've been doing chief chats where we're going to the buildings and speaking to teachers directly. We're providing lunch for them and sitting down and having conversations to where they can share the... to where they can share these concerns with us. We can answer questions to try and get to that point. I believe we only have three, maybe four schools left. We've been to everyone, all the other ones. We were just there today at Hawthorne.
There's a professional development setup for the, I think, the first week of January to go back over the, the grading system, which will probably, which should have been done months ago. It should have been done, if people don't understand it. And, and the problem with this is evaluation, okay? They probably didn't have OTAS when, maybe when you were... But they, they do have that now, and so, they're, they're evaluated on a lot of things. You know, and he put, he has put them in with, in a position where they, they almost, they almost feel like they're gonna fail before they start. That's the problem with the teachers. Okay? And, I mean, I know, I know that because I've, I've talked to the teachers, and, you know, I've talked to some union officials, and that's what they feel. And you, you have to be put in the position, if you're gonna put somebody in a position, make sure it's gonna be a successful one. Make sure that they, they buy into it and they believe in it. And it just hasn't happened so far. You know, it's, it's got a lot of work to do.
And, and we're talking about any evaluation for each teacher on their classroom management?
Yeah.
No, see, now, I've gone through that, where they've told me not to even give them higher than a 3. And with 5 being superior, and 4 was excellent, and 3 was acceptable. And I could not give a teacher higher than a 3. So, so, we've been through that.
Really?
And I was, and I was the one that had to go around doing that. So, I understand the fear that they had, because I had a fear of doing that. Because I went from the classroom to the assistant principal giving them that grade. And I, I had a fear of that, because I felt like I was still the teacher. And I will always feel that. And my foot would always be in, with the teachers. You know, because I know that the application was always the teachers, you know? And the theory was always the administration. But the application, which was sometimes astounding how the teachers had to apply that, was nonsensical almost. But they would do it, because they wanted to keep their jobs.
Right, so, is there anything else that you want to...
That's it.
Okay, alright. Right, so everyone, you know, again, I'm sure it'll be a conversation that's ongoing.
Yeah, this is gonna be an ongoing conversation.
At this stage moving forward, are there recommendations from the treasurer? I believe that's where we are.
I have two separate recommendations. We can take them individually, so we can have discussions on each one of them separately. So, recommend first, item 8.02. Consider approval to increase the tax exemption from 75 to 100% for the development agreement among the City of Lorraine, Spitzer Great Lakes Company, and Zeremba Black River Development.
All right, is this the one where we have the guests?
We have guests for both items.
So, at this time, I think there's some...
Motion second, and then go into discussion, then we can have a talk then.
Okay. Well...
So moved.
Yep.
Support.
Discussion? This time, we would welcome our guests, who are gonna share information about these tax initiatives. Please, yes, just introduce yourself, say who you are, and go from there.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Schuster. I'm with Spitzer. I want to thank the board for allowing me to come here tonight. Everyone's probably familiar with the Harbor Walk Housing Development, which is the old AM shipyards. We started that project with Zeremba back in 2001, 2002. And we were, couldn't build fast enough when we first started. Unfortunately, we haven't built a home in 10 years. As you probably all know from your own personal experiences, the housing market pretty much took a dive. Banks were not too friendly when it came to financing new housing. But more recently, we've, we've been trying to work with some other local builders. Zeremba was our exclusive builder for the first 15 years of this project. Unfortunately, Nathan Zeremba passed away a couple of years ago. And so, we have been kind of forced to look for some other local builders. We've, when we started Harbor Walk, we find, we issued, the city issued two bonds, okay? And that was to put in the infrastructure. All the roads, sanitary sewers, all that kind of stuff. We're about halfway through, through those bonds. During this 10-year period of no building, Spitzer has paid all the shortfall of all the debt service. And there's considerable debt left in the bonds and with that. And we refinanced each bond once to try and front-load some of the interest, make interest-only payments. We can't do that again, according to state law. We have 142 homes built now. Another 258 homes are ready to go. The lots are improved. We just need to find builders. We've tried to, we've lowered our lot prices. We've refinanced the bonds. We're trying to get creative with local builders. And, you know, we're trying to figure out a way, then in the next 15 years, to get the place built out and pay back all the debt. So, we met with the bond council and the city and tried to come up with different options. We're not able to extend that 30-year TIF timeframe, according to state law. We've already refinanced the bonds once. That's all we're allowed to do by state law. And the next option was to come to the school board. When we first started out, we really felt like 75% TIF was gonna be sufficient to cover the debt on this project. And it's become clear to us that that's just not gonna be the case. Our projections show that we need to take the last remaining years of the bonds and get 100% TIF, which essentially is asking the school board to defer your portion, that 25% portion, until the end of the bonds, which one is in 2028, and the other is in 2032. And that's what we're requesting tonight. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What is the amount that this equals?
So, it fluctuates. Right now, I mean, our outstanding debt is...
Should be.
6 million. Right now, the, the TIF money that is collected by the city to pay back the debt service is about $350,000. That represents 75% of the taxes, 25% coming here. So, you're getting a little over, say, 110,000 a year, which is, you know, on a $130 million budget, a drop in the bucket, but really critical to making this project work. That's not to say that you won't get that money. It'll just be deferred till the bonds are paid.
That's a tough sell, too.
It is. I understand it.
When you tell someone that it's dropping the bucket, that's probably not...
I apologize. I apologize. You're right. That's probably two teachers, and that was insensitive. Please, let me recant that. Please.
For the record, that way you don't have to...
You are absolutely right. I apologize. I just didn't realize, when I heard $130 million, I thought, wow. That's a lot of money that you guys have to be responsible for, so... Yes, it is, I will tell you that Spitzer has paid over $3 million to cover shortfall payments in the past 10 years. So, everyone has been feeling the pain. There's no question about it. It is a difficult check for Mr. Spitzer to write every year. But, that was the guarantee that we offered the city, and...
And I'm gonna ask Josh to jump in here a little bit also, because as I'm looking at this, is the correct one?
Yes.
So, these scenarios, scenario 1, scenario 2, scenario 3, can you? Does it, does it, do they have this out there?
Uh, no.
So, basically, what we have is, it's a document that kind of explains the details of how the money is collected, what, what dollars there are. And so, there's a number of different scenarios. And I'm just asking our treasurer to explain those to us.
And these are actually their scenarios. The biggest differential would be, you see the annual TIF revenue jumping from 75%. It's 960,000 to 1.28 million. So, that's the differential. That's the increased revenue they'd be receiving. And it just kind of shows you then, this is how it affects them specifically. For our purposes, it's that differential of the 75 to 100%. That 25% differential would be coming to us. It's what we'd be losing out on now. But in the long run, when these properties are realized, obviously, we'd see a significant amount of tax revenue after the fact. So, it's, my personal opinion, when I look at this, it's something, do we not grant it? And then, at some point, you know, maybe you guys don't, you can't handle the burden of the debt and whatnot, and the properties don't get complete, and then we don't, and we never realize that increased tax revenue from those properties. It's really, whether you look at it from short-sighted or long-term, long-term, and especially, you figure the, the families it would bring into the community as well. It's kind of a no-brainer when you're looking long-term.
It's a no-brainer in that it's defaulting right now.
Yeah, correct.
Right, so, so basically, it's not that it's no-brainer. It's that the agreement that was made has not been met, and we're losing...
Yes.
Significantly, and then we're being asked to make another agreement with the same risk.
Oh, of course.
And based on this, on the reality of this risk, the probability is probably perhaps a greater chance that...
If it doesn't go through, that they would go under, yes.
Yeah.
So, the abatement, though, is on improvements, or is, so we're not asking to abate the...
The additional money.
We're not asking to abate, though, the sites that are being sold to the public, where it will be, they will get some sort of a tax abatement for 15 or 20 years of their mortgage or anything like that. This is just infrastructure.
This is, this is 100% for them. This isn't the properties itself.
So, once the properties are sold, are those properties abated as well? Is that, because we have, like, Martin Drun, who has a specialty abatement situation. That's not what we're looking at here.
This is, this is different.
This is totally in the bonding. Okay, I'm clear. Totally in the bonding. I'm clear.
And, you know, hopefully, when everything's built out, when everything's built out, I mean, the schools are looking at, what, Josh, we talked about 1.2, 1.3 million a year?
Easily, yeah.
And that's at today's prices. So, I mean, you know, I think everyone in the community wants to see Harbor Walk completed. I know, I know we do.
Well, not to mention the fact that the, the impact of those families living in those properties, and we're talking about trying to revitalize downtown and everything else, with having that many families that close to downtown, it might even bring in additional. I mean, it's, there is that intrinsic value of it, of could continue to, you know, obviously, everything around it could prosper. So, it's pouring life back into the community, essentially.
I'm clear.
And that's in Lorraine. It's not, it's not in Amherst.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the motion's out. There's a second. Discussion's over. Ready for roll call, both?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And then, second one is item 8.03. Consider approval of a resolution to approve a community reinvestment area agreement among the City of Lorraine and N&amp;H LLC.
Motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Mr. Patterson?
Please, even though we know who you are and who you're self-also...
Henry Patterson, and I'm here as the attorney on behalf of N&amp;H Properties LLC regarding the City of Lorraine's. We've filed an application for, for a community reinvestment zone. My clients, what, what's going on here is they've acquired the property at 822 Broadway, which is between, what, 7th and 8th? 8th and 9th, 8th and 9th. The old Josh's place, I think, is what it was. And what they're looking to do is, they're gonna revitalize the entire building. They purchased the building right around, for about $30,000. The current market value on that building is 29,800. It is their desire to put about approximately $200,000 into that building. So, again, you're not, I think right now, you're getting about 863 a year in taxes, and they're, they want to put at least $200,000 into it. Their goal is, at a minimum, we already have plans in place. The first floor, they want to renovate it into a steak restaurant, I believe, kind of a high-end steak restaurant. Something comparable size to the FEB, if you've been there in Overland. And they're also going to be redeveloping the second and the third floors. They've not determined yet. They are currently in discussions with, they have, they're not gonna run it, but they're gonna run it to a chef who's gonna operate it and have that in place. It's their hope, again, this abatement, it's a 10-year abatement. I believe, I'm not sure if it's 10 or 12. The city goes back and forth.
I think it's 10.
Their paperwork says 15. I've heard 12 or 10. Whatever it is, we'd like to, to pursue that. They believe that during, they like to start as soon as possible. I think it's, if this board approves it, it will go before council, I believe, mid-January, early February, and then we'll start. We haven't done any renovations at all right now. They believe they're gonna employ six ti, six full-time employees and 14 part-time employees. This isn't for the school board, but for the city, they're excited about that. That's just kind of, that's during the construction phase. We hope no later than early May to June to be open for business. And, and then, it's the goal, again, for the city, to employ the same number, around 20 employees, between mixture between full-time and part-time. And again, I really think it's, you know, taking, it's, it's the process of revitalizing the area. I think for N&amp;H, they are getting in at the early phases. That's kind of how the, the mayor has looked at it so far. He's told me they've been very supportive of offering full abatement. They think as it goes forward, that they're going to be changing that number. But again, for my clients, it makes a big difference to receive this abatement. Again, you're taking a property, I mean, we're putting 15 times the current value initially into the rehab, and something tells me they're gonna spend more than that $200,000, and then give people in this community another food option. And it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a local place. It's not gonna be one of the, you know, it's not gonna be an Applebee's or an Olive Garden. Not that those are bad choices, but I think having something a little bit more local in the city, another option, is always a good thing. So, I'll leave it open for questions.
And similarly, so if I understand correctly, right now, the taxes we're receiving is based on about a $28,000...
It's, it's at, right, the county assessed value is at 29,800. Actually, the, the property is $17,000. So, it's, it's, there wasn't much going on. There's no economic, there's no revenue whatsoever. And, you know, quite honestly, we, we, we as a city are making decisions. If we don't put, start putting resources into downtown and the Broadway, these properties are gonna fall into ruin. A number of those properties, I mean, people have done nothing with them. So, you know, again, it's, there is some abatement, but at the, in the, in the long run, quite honestly, it's gonna be additional revenue, significant revenue for the school board, the school district, I should say, but also, if it's jobs and its options for our citizens, and hopefully, and again, drawing in more people. Again, with places like Speak of the Devil down that corridor as well, and, and, you know, there's, with the revitalization of the Broadway building, Vic Nardini is working on something as well. It's kind of some exciting things that might be happening, and we hope to play a role in that process.
Any other questions on projected revenues or anything? If everyone's satisfied?
I am.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
I'm glad you'll be a nice restaurant in Lorraine.
So, we're ready for roll call?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I guess we are now at, at 9.
12. Well, I guess, yeah.
Nope, no recommendations there?
12.
Any new business for discussion? Some of the new business we'll discuss will be with legal counsel, based on a pending legal matter, but we'll wait until the end and go into executive session for that. Any reports, requests from board members? This time, we would entertain our second hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board at this time, we welcome you. Second hearing? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Lynda Lee. I have so many questions. I don't know where to begin. But first, I would like to thank you, Yvonne, for being the light at the end of the tunnel. As you were speaking, you brought back a memory I had when I attended the school board, when there was a discrepancy of David Hall and Mr. Graham. David Hall, I don't know, was he the assistant at the time? But he didn't go, you know, you would think, as a teacher, you could go through the ranks You know, you would think, as a teacher, you could go through the ranks to reach superintendent status. That didn't happen with him. And that, when you spoke about that, that's one thing I remembered. So, I know what you're talking about, as well as other people sitting here pretty much know what you went through. Then, the second thing is, okay, the Harbor Walk that she was talking about, you're saying that should bring people in, right? But if our schools are crappy, who do you guys think want to come here? If we can't resolve this renewal issue or whatever is going on between the CEO, who wants to come here? I mean, that's one of the questions I had, and then the other thing. I know you all have discussed this before, but I keep wondering, who does not need money for the school? What issue is so important that it blocks that, that everything else is superficial? I don't understand that. Maybe you guys can give me an answer? There's a lot of... I think it's a lot of distrust because there's such negativity always in the newspaper or on TV. You're getting one side, you don't hear the other side. And I really hope that somehow this can be worked out.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hello? My name is Barbie Washington, I live on Riverside Drive. I just want to thank the board, thank the staff and teachers, the teacher union for their condolences and their support of my family. Thank you.
We are very sorry for your loss. At this time, our next board meeting...
January 7.
January 7. That'll be our organizational meeting, so we usually have that one start the hour earlier, so are we going 4 to 5, and then 5 to...
You guys tell me. We normally started at 6 last year, and we would come in earlier for that. But I don't know if people can meet sooner before that, or if we want to keep it at 5 and just work from there.
Then, we'll keep it at 5.
All right, so, we're just meeting, it'll be at 5, and the regular board meeting will begin immediately following.
Then, we'll set our agenda from there.
Okay, so, we're going to do it at fat?
Yes.
Yes.
Not change it?
Right. And then, the next meeting, because there's two meetings, there's the organizational meeting, and then there is the regular meeting. So, they'll just go back-to-back. And at this time, we need a motion to go into executive session. And just for the public, we will not come out with any decision-making. So, this, if you want to stick around and sit around, feel free to, or you may leave. But we need to go into executive session for legal matters with our legal counsel. I don't know which item it is. For C. We have a motion, please, to go into executive session for item C.
Some move.
Support.
Second. Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
So, again, we will not have any action coming out. Thank you for your attendance. Happy holidays to all of you.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah. Zekwanza.